Thanks, Darren. I will call this meeting to order and Jill, can you take roll call, please?
Sure. Jeff? Laurel?
Here.
Kelsey?
Here.
Vern?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Don? Craig?
Craig. Craig, you're muted.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks, Jill. Uh, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. If there are no additions or changes, uh, we'll do a roll call for approval of the agenda.
I need a...
A motion. Sorry, I need a motion first.
So moved.
Second, Kelsey.
Uh, roll call?
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Uh, well, that's agenda though, right?
Yep, that was agenda.
No, we already did it the, uh... We just did approval of minutes.
That was the agenda.
No, I think we did roll call then agenda.
Okay.
Fifty minutes now.
Okay.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve the February twenty-second minutes, please?
Vern will approve.
Do you have a second?
Second, Kelsey.
I got a second. Okay.
Uh, we'll do roll call on that one.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay, we have approval of the minutes.
Thanks, Jill. Um, in absence of a public hearing, we will move on to new business. And I don't know if I'm turning this over to Chris or if I'm turning it over to Darren on the historic property designations, I guess.
Well, if Chris has something he wants to speak to, we certainly will let him, uh, first. Chris, would you wish to speak or would you, uh...
Uh, I'm, well, this, this is just part... This is part of the Heritage Preservation Commission's efforts to designate, continually designate more local properties to the, uh, locally historic. And so the Victor Lundin Company and the NP Depot are the latest. And I guess if anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer them. I should let you know that, uh, the NP Depot, and Craig can certainly speak to that, is undergoing, um, a national registered nomination process, so, uh, that's, that's taking place as well.
Laurel, I got a question.
Darren, do you want to pres- do you want to present on what's happening when, how this works and what it means to the group?
Well, what the, what the group needs to do here tonight is, uh, give a recommendation to the city council on these two, um, requests. That recommendation goes to them. They will hold a public, the council level will hold a, a hearing on this, on this information, um, and make that final determination. So what we're doing here tonight is, um, reviewing this, giving a recommendation to council. Know that there will be more to this process, though. Scott, you had a question?
Yeah, I got something. Darren, and I, Craig, you can probably answer this too, but when, does this process do anything to the, the landowners? I'm sure, Craig, you were part of it, and is Victor Lundin part of this too? They're all, they're on board with that too? That's, that's all my question has. We, we've, over the years, some of it's been happening and, uh, it's, it kind of came about in the wrong direction. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on board with it, the owners is on board, and I, I assume, Craig, you are, and then, of course, the, the Lundin brothers, I think, just want to make sure they're on board of it.
Yes.
Yes, I'm the liaison.
I didn't read the le- I haven't read the packet, so, okay. I did not, that's what I was gonna say, I did not read the packet.
Sure. Um, y- yes, they both submitted letters, um, requesting this, um, to us, so we-
Okay, great.
Confirmation that they-
Right.
Yep, that's good.
Yes, and I'm, uh, the liaison to the Heritage Preservation Commission, so I've been at their meetings, so I'm well aware of what they're doing and why they're doing it, so-
Great.
I, you know, I'm definitely in fo- and I'm definitely in favor of it, so...
Then do we have a motion to approve this recommendation for the, uh, to the city council?
This is Kelsey, so moved, that we recommend yes for both the Victor Lundin and for the depot.
And I'm sorry, I didn't see RCU were on here, so I did not mean to not include you here. Um, and then I guess we'll do a second, and then if we want to come back, if you'd like to say something, I apologize, you didn't show up on my screen right away. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second? Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment before we do roll call?
And, uh-
Okay.
I believe, Craig, it's probably wise, right, that you abstain from voting?
Yeah, he should probably abstain if possible. Craig, are you comfortable doing that?
Um, yeah, I, that's fine.
Are we, do we still have a quorum without his vote, though?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll do roll call.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, and Craig abstains.
Abstained, Craig.
Motion carries.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
HPC for all your hard work on this and continuing to bring properties forward. And Craig for being part of that process.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move on here to, um, ordinance update, and I think we might try move through tonight the finalizing of the business ordinance and then have preliminary discussion on the residential changes with the hope of trying to finalize wording for that next month. Um, so if we want to, maybe let's do this in two pieces and work with the business commercial wording first. Does that make sense, Darren? Do you want to present on that?
Sure, sure. So this is in relation to, um, if you remember back in, I want to say October, November timeframe, we kind of looked at a whole bunch of ordinance, um, changes, and at the time, we said, let's move forward with, um, just those cup, you know, couples, um, more, um, time-sensitive things. Um, so we did. And, uh, now that those were over and we didn't have any, uh, public hearings this month, I, I thought we could bring these back, and, and so here are a couple of things that, um, I wanted to discuss. By all means, are these, um, you know, these are just starting points. Uh, these can be absolutely amended or, or changed as necessary. So, uh, we'll just go through them here. Specifically, in the I-1, I wanted to add language, uh, that specifically says, you know, use is permitted or conditionally permitted in the B-2 zone unless regulated differently elsewhere in this chapter. So that just ties those commercial uses in the B-2 zone to the, uh, industrial zone without having to list them again. In the industrial zone, it just ties them back. In the B-2 zone, we don't allow residential uses, um, so that wouldn't get pulled into here, but, um, it's a, but it would, it's a way to add some of those, um, uses very easily. Then, in, uh, B-2 and the B-3, B-2 is again are more of our general business district outside of kind of downtown, B-3 is our bis- business district, um, downtown here. Just adding a few things to kind of help make these more clear, um, adding these three items. Um, so pawn shops, museums, community centers, or, you know, cultural facilities, auto parts, retail, and, and gas filling or slash convenience stores. Um, they're, if... Some of them are kind of in there somewhat, but this would just be calling them out directly in the ordinance. It's more of just a, um, a cleanup type of thing, but, if you put them in the, uh, B-3, then they would be pulled into the B-5, B-6, which is our, um, our, like, our mall area. Um, so just know that that, by adding them here, that also adds them in there due to that connection. And then if we do pull in the B-2 to the industrial, that would pull these uses into the industrial as well. So just know that those moving parts exist. Then also, when we talked last year, um, these items are all listed in the B-2 under conditional uses, um, in the B-2 zone. And some of the discussion was around, do they need to be conditional uses, or can we just permit a retail bakery or a cabinet shop or a dry cleaning laundry, uh, laundry or upholstery or furniture repair as a permitted use, and do we need a CUP? So there are other uses that are still CUPs. These were the little vain ones that were brought up, um, as do we need them? So, or can they be just moved to permitted uses, um, in that list? And I can certainly pull up the ordinance if you want to look at the ordinance specifically to see, um, what's left or what other uses are permitted. We could absolutely do that. Um, these were ones that were just identified several months ago. Um, and I believe the rest are residential things, so, um, based on Laurel's suggestion, are there any questions on this?
I just have one question. I know when we first brought this up, the dry cleaning establishments, there was some talk about, and I, I don't know where it landed, but I know someone asked, and I don't remember who, the environmental concerns with dry cleaning establishments. Do we lose some ability to put conditions on those establishments, or are the environmental concerns all addressed in what dry cleaners need to do to be able to be in business in general?
Yes and yes.
Okay.
Yes, if you move them to permitted use, you do lose the ability to add conditions specific to them. And yes, they are required to meet all building code and state permitting licenses and all that in order to operate, uh, in the first place. I do believe, uh, and I'm gonna just take a quick look here. Um, I don't know, are you still able to see my screen, what I'm looking at? In the... So we're talking specifically in the B-2 here. Um, I'll just go to it. Can you, can you see my screen? Or do I need to reshare?
All I can see is the, the part that was on the packet, the page from the packet.
So let me share, reshare, um... So now what you should be seeing is our, our ordinance. So this is our, our B-2 business district. So in here, we have a list of uses that are permitted. And then, um, so you can see, there's a laundry list here of, um, uses. And then conditional uses. Um, they said these were some of the uses. Now there'd still be other activities, you know, trailer rentals, uh, truck sales, car washing establishments, and, you know, nothing, leaving them there. It was just these items that we addressed, um, last time. I will say too, I believe if you go to the B-3, which is our downtown mostly, there are similar pockets of it in town, dry cleaning and laundry, uh, is a permitted use, um, there. So in our central business district, it is a permitted use. Not saying that it necessarily doesn't need to be a CUP, because I to- I understand where you're coming from. And certainly in the B-2, um, can be left under here. I, that's fine.
I, I'm not opposed to it. I just, I looked back at my notes from this, and, and dry cleaning was one that was a discussion point when we first did this. So that, that's why I brought it up.
And it's not to say that it can't be-
Do we have other feedback or questions?
Yeah, as I say, it's not that that can't be left as is and, and addressed in the future if we want to move forward with something now. But we can leave it as a conditional use and, and review that further if you wish.
How does the rest of the commission feel?
This is Kelsey. I think given the, some of the environmental concerns there too, maybe that one should be left out for now and left as conditional use.
There's no other discussion? Oh, Darren, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, I was just gonna say, um, how this would work is, is, uh, you know, we can either, A, move this, if you wish to move this forward tonight, um, just let me know, except if you want to leave that one out. Ralph would then write up, um, an ordinance for this, and it would come back as a public hearing and obviously can be looked at and modified from there as well. So know that this isn't, you know, the only chance you have to review this, um, if you wish to move forward tonight. Um, otherwise, again, we can discuss it more, but I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that, you know, there's a more, more process to this.
Hey, Laurel, Scotty.
How would the wording, how would the wording on this change in ordinance form if we're just adding to the list? There's really not much more wording would change, is there?
No, it would just be adding, again, to that list of items or just moving them out, uh, you know, re- redlining them from CUP and, and inserting them and underlining them for the conditional or under the permitted use in this instance. Here, we'd just be adding these words to that list, and the same here, just be adding these words to that list. So, yeah, there's no real major changes. It would just be shifting things around a little bit.
Does the commission want to move forward with, uh, taking this to ordinance stage, uh, with, I'm hearing, without dry cleaning?
Darren, or Laurel, I got a question. Could we get some more information on that, uh, dry cleaning? Because I, I got a feeling the state of Minnesota probably has more rules on it than we know about, and I would think that just maybe we're over, no, not overstepping our bounds, but I think that the state would be more controlling on that than what the city would have to be. So I'd like to see some more information on that, on that dry cleaning. I should have asked for that before tonight, but I didn't get a chance to look at it, so...
Yeah, um...
Probably, I mean, if that's where we're at, I'm not opposed to that. I, I always think slower is better to make sure we do it right.
Exactly.
So do we want to table this until next month?
I think it would be the best to-
And get some more information on that?
To get more information from Darren, I think that'd be great. I'd be real comfortable with that, to see that.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, Darren, are you comfortable tracking that information down? Do you want one of us to help with that, or are you comfortable kind of looking into that piece?
Yeah, I can-
I know you have a lot on your plate.
No, I can, um, uh, look into that. I'll start with Jason, our building official, and then, um, see what kind of licensing is required, um, in addition to that, because, yes, I, I'm almost certain there are, um, very specific state laws for that use. Um, so...
And I guess the other question I would have would be, if we look at other cities that are similar to our size, Detroit Lakes, Alexandria, I mean, those kind of, Morehead maybe, where, what zoning are they dri- and I recognize every town's zone is a little different, what lands in it. Are, are dry cleaners typically in a B-2 equivalent zone, or are they normally not, I guess?
Yeah, I, um, I can try to provide that. Like I said, that's where, um, you know, our B-3, so our downtown, it's a permitted use. I also believe it is in our industrial. Because being it's in B-3, it's also allowed in our B-6, so it'd be allowed in our, um, looks at our, our mall area. And then, uh, dry cleaning is also, um, a permitted use in our industrial zone, obviously, so... Right now, it's in the, and it's a CUP in B-2, permitted in B-3, permitted in B-5 and B-6, permitted in industrial.
Does everyone on the commission have a strong fe- sense of what B-2 is, or would that be a helpful thing to look at?
I think he'd just bring that definition with us too, even when he brings that state stuff with, just to kind of give us more to look at.
Yep.
Certainly.
Yep.
Are you seeing the map right now?
Yeah, we are, and we can do it next month too, that's fine. I just, I think before we move forward with something, we should make sure everyone knows where they're talking.
So, um, just to give you a brief, before we, um... Why is it showing more transparent than I wanted? To give you an idea. There, there we go. Okay, so this orange color, that is our B-2. So it kind of surrounds, um, Lincoln this way. Um, this is, for instance, is the mall area, kind of give you an idea. Um, and then it is also... This is our B-3, this, um, salmon pink color, this is our downtown. And then B-2 also then goes down, um, here, kind of 210 here, and then down towards the golf course, so a little bit. That kind of gives you an idea where B-2 is. The dark blue is our industrial. Um, this is I-1. I-2 is the dark blue, I-1 here, the purple. Kind of give you an idea.
Just, uh, being involved in real estate sales in the past, uh, I don't know about the, uh, different zoning, but I know that the state of Minnesota has a number of regulations on, uh, cleaners.
I don't know if any exist in our B-2. I, I know the one exists in our B-3. I'm not sure. But, like I said, um, I can certainly bring back more information, but that hopefully helps.
It helps to see the map too, because seeing the map and seeing where those areas are makes me less nervous about it being in a B-2, to be honest.
Sure. Yeah, residential would be then the yellows, and this, this lighter orange is our four, but then the rest of this yellowish green is all residential, so... Okay. Um, was there a motion for the table this till next month, Jill?
I'll make that motion.
Do we need a motion, or do we just keep it on the, okay, we have a motion. Scott, a motion, do we have a second?
Kelsey, second.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A roll call, I'm sorry.
Oh, we're going.
I'm used to the other way. Jill, can you roll call that for us, please?
Okay, what exactly does the motion measures tabling?
We are tabling, uh, the discussion on the changes to the industrial and the business zones to next month to get a little more information.
Okay, Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Um, Darren, I think let's talk about the accessory buildings and the fencing. Um, I know that these are early stages of this, and we're gonna work through some stuff and hopefully, um, come back and try and get this finalized in the next month or two, but if you kind of want to go over where your starting point is, that would be great.
Yeah. So with accessory buildings, uh, as you all are aware of, you know, we dealt with quite a few variances in the past year or so with, in regards to accessory buildings, whether it be, you know, in front yards or side yards or the rear one-third, or, you know, all those things are currently in code. So what I typed up here is sort of, uh, uh, middle ground to help alleviate some of those constant variances we saw. And so specifically around, uh, this is already in there. Mostly B, C, and D, um, are modified from what's already in code to reflect this. Specifically saying, uh, no accessory structure in the required front yard, including both front yards on a corner lot. But then, so we would allow them in the, obviously, the rear yard or the side yard. But if a parcel is located in shoreline on a riparian lots, that means you have waterfrontage on a river or a lake. Then the accessory structure may be located in the front yard, but must be all primary structure setbacks. So that means thirty feet off the road or forty potentially, depending upon the type of the road. And then either five or ten feet from the side yards, um, depend upon the zoning, uh, would be required. So that was one exemption that we saw quite a few requests from last year. This would alleviate that, assuming that they can meet the primary, you know, thirty feet off the road, et cetera. This here, C actually is, well, that's almost the exact same. I don't think, actually, that's not changed at all. D would be one, would be a little bit of change and probably one of the bigger ones. The intent is still to leave it, so accessory structures, um, shall not cover more than third percent of the rear yard area. That's what it is now, um, in that if your rear yard area is, uh, X amount of square feet, you take that square feet. So you measure from the house to the back property line, you get that square foot. Then you take thirty percent of that, that's what you can have in accessory structure. So that, depend upon the size of your rear yard, could be, you know, two hundred square feet to several thousand square feet of accessory structure, depend upon how big your lot is. That's it, that's in there now, nothing changes there. We would also use that limit when calculating allowances for that shoreline exemption and B above. Um, so the idea is, is you would still use the rear yard area to determine how much square feet you could have for accessory structure. And then the setbacks wouldn't change, uh, five feet in R-A and R-1, and then three feet in the R-2 and R-3 and R-4 districts. So that, that's in there now, nothing changes there. And then, and nothing changes in E either, just, uh, that you can't build an accessory structure without having a primary structure first. So what was taken out was, um, two big items in that one. Accessory structure is being required with the rear one-third of the lot. So what that meant is, if the lot was a hundred and fifty feet deep, we had to take that, divide it by three, so then your lot, your accessory structure had to be located within that first, uh, whatever distance from the rear lot line. So if you couldn't put it right up to your house, it had to be, you know, closer to the back lot line. That presented issues in a couple of variances we did last year. The intent, I think, was, um, you know, obviously, if you have an alleyway in the back of, um, a lot, you have your accessory structure close to the alleyway, um, which would make sense, but on a lot of parts of town, we don't have alleys in the back anymore. And, um, you're accessing it maybe off your front driveway, well, then having it way back there creates the opposite effect in that now you needed to get a driveway to go all the way back to the back, it's, because you don't have access off your backyard. So if you do have access off your rear yard, it made sense. If you don't, it, it, it actually makes things create kind of, um, some big hardships. So removing that requirement to not have to be within the rear one-third of the yard would, like I said, if you have an alley, you're probably still gonna put it back there anyway to have a short driveway, but if not, then it wouldn't require you to get a variance and go through the, that process. We would say it's okay to have it ten feet away from the rear of your house, if you choose to put it there. And then the other one is, um, the big change or removal, um... Was the, uh, to the rear one-third and then the, um, dip three percent in there. The front yards in there. What was the other one? I know I'm trying to remember. Is that before? Oh, allowing them in the, the, the side yard, uh, the, as well. So if you had a, uh, your structure, you have a rear yard, which is from the back wall back, and then you have a front yard, which is from your front wall forward, and then the side is that area in between on the sides of your home, so that little area, it would, you, um, the way it's written here, you would be allowed to have a detached accessory structure in that area. So you still need to be behind the front wall, you know, if you will, um, but this would allow it there. The other times where that comes in, kind of, um, where we've seen variances on this is, if you don't mind, I might go share, uh, to find an example.
Didn't we just do one on a corner lot for that?
Yep, that, that happens quite a bit. Um, but I think that was because of a, that was a front yard issue.
Okay.
But, uh, let's go... Here, let's just try here. So, let's see if this is any good examples, um... Well, here would be one. Uh, let's just say, so to kind of put this in perspective, so... this is the rear yard.
I, I don't think we're seeing the same thing you're maybe seeing.
Okay. Did you see the map?
Um, what I'm seeing is the accessory building language, but maybe other people are seeing something else.
Sorry.
No, that's the only thing I've got too.
Okay. Hold on. Sorry about that. Yep. You gotta do the new share every time.
Now we're good. Now we have the map.
All right. So what you're seeing, so this again is obviously your rear yard. This then would be your front yard, and then these are your side yards. So if someone wished to put, you know, an accessory structure, you know, in here, right now they'd be asking for a variance. Because it's in their side yard and it's more than likely not with, in the rear one-third either. So the way that's written now would be, you know, just not in the front yard. So they, you'd be allowed your accessory structure as long as you're not in this area, you know, back. So if someone wanted to build here or here, they could. And obviously they, and so this is an example of right now we're requiring the rear one-third. You know, the intent is to have the accessory structure back here. What that in essence means is you gotta have more driveway to get back to here in order to make that work. Now, once you get, the same can be said for a lot of these homes along, say here, where you don't necessarily, I mean, I guess there is an alleyway here, but it's not developed. You know, when you don't have that alleyway construction anywhere in here, but when you, you run into that same issue in more of our areas of town where we have alleyways, you're going to build probably on your back alley line, just because again, like I said, you don't. You'd build that way. You don't want to, you'd less driveway to the shed. So that's why.
Can we maybe have discussion on this one and then come into fencing and keep them a little separate?
Yeah, that's fine.
Conversation?
Yeah.
Okay. I thank you, one, for all your hard work. I think this will help a lot of people, especially out in Lakes country, or the Lakes edge of town. Couple of things that I looked into, and I, you and I had a good conversation this afternoon, Darren, and thank you for that. And one thing that, just from looking at other ordinances, once we allow the rear and the side yard, which I think is important, a lot of those ordinances then change the land cover where we say accessory structures shall not cover more than thirty percent of the rear yard area. They changed that wording to be rear and side yard area to be the same for, now that we're looking at side yard. There's some properties in town that have very small rear yards, for example, that have all kinds of side yard where they could build. So that's one point that I wanted to bring up. And then the other one I wanted to bring up was, and Darren and I talked about this today, and I know it's in a lot of ordinances, the nineteen feet in height or not to exceed the height of the primary structure to give some flexibility there too. And that that'll feed into granny flat conversation that Darren is working on for months to come here.
So if I may expand on that, yeah, there, there, there are code languages out there that would use, you know, not to exceed nineteen feet in height or the primary structure's height, whatever is greater. So theoretically, if your house is twenty-five feet tall, you could have an accessory structure that high as well. But you couldn't exceed your accessory structure height.
Right. And if your height was fifteen, you could go to nineteen in essence. Is that correct?
Yep. So if you had a fifteen-foot-high house, then nineteen would be your max, depend upon whatever height it is. So it wouldn't allow you to have a fifteen-foot-high house and then build a twenty-five-foot-tall accessory structure, which then could seem out of place potentially. So yeah, that is certainly something, you know, if the commission wants to discuss that, it can easily be written in. If you want to see what that language looks like, you can easily write that in here. If that's the wish of the commission.
Uh, one of the things that I would like to see covered, and I don't, maybe it already is some other place here, and that's these metal pole buildings that pop up. They just don't really fit in the neighborhoods quite often, and it seems like they're a collector of junk on the outside besides. With the exception of about one in town that's maybe kept up quite nicely. I don't know if that would take care of stuff around them or not. But a metal pole building in the middle of a four-hundred-thousand-dollar neighborhood just doesn't fit real well, in my book.
I agree. And is that, does this matching facade address that?
So.
Where it says it needs to have the matching facade of the primary structure?
So I'm trying to think if that is, I think that's in your current one now. Yes.
Yeah, I read, I read that in here.
And, and so that is the intent. So if your house has two-foot box thieves on it, your pole shed should have two-foot box thieves on it. And if you have like a, a matching, it said the tent with a matching facade would be, you know, if you have a brick wainscoting or a brick, maybe that's not the right word. Like, is that wainscoting the lower level? Say you have three feet of brick. Your, your garage should have that similar facade, you know, maybe use that brick as well. So it kind of matches and blends in. If your house is green, your, your shed should be some matching shade of that. Some other color.
I guess my, my thoughts on that is I agree that ma, in, in letter C, that matching facade, can we say matching or improved upon facade of the primary structure?
Well, that's going to be probably hard whose interpretation.
To, to, yeah, yeah. I, I agree with the pole sheds. They're hard. And I don't know if it's just because we haven't had anything to not allow them. But I also think people have bought bare lands and put a bathroom and a kitchen in them and gotten their, you know, I mean, put up a pole shed. But I don't know how you can outrule pole, pole sheds in a town.
Yeah, the building code is, you know, going to allow them based off certain scenarios. But they said from an architectural standpoint, they still should, you know, I, I like to say, you know, there's a difference between, you know, there's pole sheds and then there's nice garages that are pole sheds.
Just to relate on that, there's a stick, you can build a stick pole shed and steel side it. So it's a very nice garage, but it still looks like a pole shed, but it's not. It's a very nice, well-built garage.
A lot of.
I agree.
Yeah, a lot of pole sheds are now are built with, they said, boxed in eaves, you know, like I said, a nice wainscoting, maybe on them. And they, they look just like a stick-built structure with steel siding and steel roofing. And, and that can be done versus, I said, I know there's a lot of them out there, I own one, that, you know, there's no eave or it's just the metal hangs off and maybe doesn't fit in necessarily with the general character of a lot of garages out there.
Well, I'm matching what Scott was just saying. I, I think we need to look at the reality that where real estate prices are going in our area nationwide, more and more people need to stay in their homes and make improvements there and maybe can't afford the next step up. And the reality is the more flexibility we give people to invest in their property, we raise our tax base. And that means that people are investing in upgrading their property and they're not turning into rentals and things like that. And I think that's good for our community to give flexibility for people to improve and add tax base to their property.
Well, adding tax base, you know, that, that's all well and good, and I don't have a problem with the extra buildings. But just from past experiences, a, a, on a twenty-foot, forty-by-twenty pole shed in the backyard does not add value to the neighborhood.
I don't know that this is where we can out, outrule pole buildings. I, I think that that's going to have to be building code and what building materials are allowed within city limits. Am I, am I wrong on that, Darren?
Well, I could certainly talk to Jason about that in terms of, you know.
You know, can we have Jason just come to our next meeting?
I'm sure he'd be willing to.
And he, I think he could probably shed some good light on that. And probably Vern can do one-to-one on him and talk to him about that and get that. Instead of us trying to debate this back and forth, I think it'd be just good to have him here.
He could probably answer.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea at all. And I, I think the thing is, we also have to recognize pole sheds have an affordability thing and, and we need to, we, we can't just go out and say no pole sheds altogether because there are some very nice, very expensive pole buildings in this town.
Yeah, and that's where the intent with this language, and well, I think even the code now is, like I said, if you put an ice eaves and match your facade and you have that, I, I, I think it helps kind of create that architectural feel of it matching. Matching everything.
So we, we've talked about some things that we want to circle back to next month or when Jason's able to come. Are there other changes in here that we would like to touch on so we can get some wording back to us next month when Jason's able to come? Or when he's able to?
Are we all okay with changing then the height to, or the primary height structure?
Yes.
Okay. And then, then we will look at the pole construction. Is there anything else on this one we wanted to look at?
That, of the thirty percent rear and side combined.
Okay.
And I guess my other question is, and I've seen it, so I know it's happening all over town. We have a lot of people that have a detached garage and a playhouse or a shed. I think that's okay. How does that actually work in this code? Because it doesn't necessarily call that out. But I, I don't think we want to start saying, oh, your houses has a detached garage, but you now can't have your little eight-by-ten shed or your, your playhouse.
Well, it'd be limited to, yeah, thirty percent of the rear yard for all of those accessory uses combined.
So they, they can have more than one accessory structure?
Yes. So as long as it is.
Okay.
No more than thirty percent. Yeah, the way this is, you know, this number, let's just say your rear yard is five thousand square feet in size. Five thousand times by thirty percent means.
Okay.
Fifty.
I just didn't know if it was one accessory structure per, or if that was somewhere stated somewhere.
Yeah. So using the five thousand example, it'd be fifteen hundred. If you had a nine, twenty, or thirty-by-thirty garage, that's nine hundred. And then you had another, you know, you could go up to fifteen hundred in total is the way the intent of this. So cumulative, that would be your limit.
Okay.
Now, if you had.
Okay. Thank you for.
Yeah. A twenty thousand square feet in your rear yard, obviously you can have a lot more accessories.
There'd be a very big playhouse. Right.
Right. Or multiple. You could have four. Four little sheds.
Right.
You know, yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't know. I think, I'm guessing fencing is going to end up getting tabled to next month too. Can we do that with one motion here or circle back if it doesn't?
Let's talk about it and we'll go from there. How's that sound?
Okay. Do you want to present on fencing?
Yeah, sure. So right now the fencing, no permit is required if it's less than seven feet in height. And the intent with this is to leave it like that. And the fencing is one of these areas that we haven't seen variances on, but it's very, the, the code language is not as clear as to be able to explain to somebody what is it allowed, what isn't allowed, what the setbacks are. It's not as, as easy. So I thought maybe we should look at creating some, the intent of this is to try to create language that's easier to understand, to say this is what you can build, go forth and build it without a permit. So that's the intent behind this. Basically, the biggest things here, you know, obviously we're, we want to use fencing materials. So, you know, not old tires built up to create a fence or something like that. In residential zones, any fence can be up to four feet in height anywhere. Fences can be up to six feet in height in the side and rear. And that would be again, kind of using those same examples, the side and rear based off of the house. In commercial areas, not to exceed eight and a half feet. Barbed wire can be used if it's at least six feet from natural grade. So up top, you know, for security fencing. And then we would measure that fence height starting at six inches with a natural grade. So if you have a six-foot panel you buy from a store, obviously if you have a sloped yard, the panels might be higher in some spots off the ground. We would start measuring at six inches from natural grades. Is the intent here so that way, because this fence might be six foot, six inches off the natural grade in some places and that would be okay, is the intent. Fences at a button alley should be five feet off the lot line, provide snow plowing, garbage pickup, et cetera, provide some buffer to that back alley. This is language in the code currently. I just put it in here to, so it's in the fence section. Right now it's in a different section. But corner lots, so you would measure the street intersection corner, go back twenty feet, both distances, connect the two endpoints, that's your site triangle. Fence can't exceed three feet in height in that distance in the front yard. The intent there is so that if you can see around your corner. Or what net, what happens more naturally is the fence would just stop at that twenty-foot distance and then angle in and then go back the other direction. So the fence would be in that area is typically what I see people do instead of trying to build a fence all the way up into the corner. This one then is to address some of the front yard fencing. Fences in the front yard in residential zones can be maximum four feet in height with a minimum of fifty percent. Yeah. And then fences in the front yard are limited to decorative fencing, such as picket fences, split rail fences or decorative iron brick fencing. And then chain link fences not considered decorative fencing. So just to call that out. That no chain link there. And then all posts or similar structures that support the fence should face inward. So if it's a wood fence and you have four-by-fours, those should be on your side of the fence. And the side facing, that's the good side should face the road or the budding property owners. The one thing I didn't talk about is nothing would change in terms of setbacks. You know, it just needs to be on your property. So, but you also need to be able to maintain your property. So what does that mean? When I talk to people, it means if it's a wood fence, it should be at least a foot, if not two, probably off the property line. So you can go over there, paint, stain, what have you, your fence without trespassing on your neighbor's side. If it's a plastic or PVC fence and you don't need to maintain it, that means you probably can go right up to the edge of the property because you're never going to need to go around and maintain your fence. So there's no hard number of what you can or can't be at. But same time you said, if you put up a wood fence and you put it on the property line, it's going to result in probably issues unless your neighbor agrees to take care of it. Because otherwise you'd be trespassing every time. So, you know, there's, instead of putting a hard number and just say, you know, it must be one foot, and then someone comes in and says, I want to be six inches, you know, they need a variance. This is a little more open-ended for them to, you know, put it where they feel is okay. If it's something that requires maintenance, chain link, plastic, you know, obviously you wouldn't have that issue. Any questions on this or comments?
I have a couple. In two B, one other ordinance I read allowed for, and I thought it was an interesting idea, for any residential lots that were abutting, commercial or industrial lots, on the abutting property line, they allowed the residential fence to go up to the height limit of the industrial fence. I thought that was interesting when maybe the industrial side doesn't feel like they need a fence, but the residential did. If it was right on that property, on that abutting line, would we consider allowing that side to go to eight and a half feet? If the industrial lot side could have.
I like that. I like that a lot.
Oops, I didn't hear you, Darren.
I, I like that a lot. Yeah.
So I, I, I don't know. It's just, it's something to consider. I, I read a bunch of these yesterday and I, I'm just kind of, that was one I considered. Then number four, maximum height of a fence on the corner. I saw a lot that referred to with greater than fifty percent, or with less than fifty percent, I'm sorry, opacity. And then they went to four feet. But it basically, they allowed for the, if it had fifty percent opacity, it could be taller at the corner line. So I don't know if that's something we would want to look at. And then the other thing there is I think we want to call out corner lot of street right-ofways. So we're not messing with alley right-ofways necessarily where people get affected that way. Make that very clear. And the final one that I kind of was thinking and saw a lot when I was in Detroit Lakes this weekend was, in the front yard, and a lot of this has to do with pools, too, more, more and more people are putting pools in, and they're ending up in their side yards. Um, in the residential zone, if we allow up to six feet, as long as it has the fifty percent opacity, DL has that, I believe Alexandria has that, um, as long as they're decorative, and they have that fifty percent opacity. If they don't have the fifty percent opacity, then obviously they can't be more than four feet. Those are just the feedback points I found.
I don't have any issues with any of those things myself, I don't know what the commission feels, but those all are fine.
This is Kelsey. Um, I tend to agree on, uh, for the front yard, because some people, for whatever reason, may need to keep a pet or a dog, or maybe they have a garden in the front yard they need to keep deer out of, um, things like that, so it would be nice to have some exceptions there.
Well, I was thinking on the, uh, on the, on the setbacks on the sides, uh, if we don't have a certain setback there, it's pretty hard to even, uh, maintain the exterior of the fence. And then, of course, uh, what are you gonna do about mowing? Uh, can't get a lawnmower to mow, uh, uh, one foot or even a two-foot, and I suppose you can come back there with a weed whacker, but, uh, it should, I would think, if you're gonna maintain it, uh, you need, uh, a certain amount of distance there so you can get back in there.
Is that, Darren, is that addressed by saying leaving enough space for maintenance? I mean, to me, that, that would be kind of addressed in your words, is that accurate? I agree with Vern, I'm just making sure we're covered.
Yes, so the intent with this language, um, you know, the property owner must be able to maintain both sides of their fence if maintenance is required. Um, again, the intent of that is, um, kind of like I spoke to before, if it's wood, that means you should have some sort of setback. I'm guessing, yeah, it's gonna be the, the width of your lawnmower deck, uh, or, uh, you know, two feet, so you can stand on the property and weed whip. Um, something of that nature, uh, they said for you to be able to stand and stain or paint the fence. Um, but if you have a plastic PVC fence, let's say, um, you're never going to need to maintain that side, or, and if you put it right up to the property line, which is the way the code is now, um, you would, you wouldn't, you know, the neighbor would mow up to the property line on their side, and you would have a fence for, you know, a few inches wide, and then you would have your mowing, so you wouldn't need to necessarily mow or paint, obviously, that type of material. Um, some codes do have a, a set setback for fencing, um, for, like I said, two feet, one foot, minimums. Um, like I said, then what you can run into then is for neighbors that, what you find then is says, all right, if someone must put up a wood fence and the neighbors do get along, then you can't put a wood fence, you know, six feet off the property line, and then you just, or six inches, sorry, and then, you know, you agree to maintain both sides or something like that. But then, once the neighbor, the problem with that is, is then, let's say a neighbor moves and, and someone else moves in, then you have to deal with, um, you know, is this wood, how do I maintain the other side of this fence if the neighbor doesn't want me trespassing, kind of thing, so, um, so the, like I said, that's why the intent is, it needs to be something, but what, what that setback is, is really up to the landowner to determine based off the material, um, and what they are planning to do.
I got something, Darren.
Yeah, fire me.
Laura, um, I, I used to have a pool in my backyard, I, I moved away, and I had fencing around it right on the property line, and I did not maintain the, 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 the other owner's property, they, they maintained it themselves, and I maintained my side, and that worked out really good, I don't, so I'm not sure where this goes, and then there was, in a, or just part of the yard, uh, they had a, a chain link fence right up to my property line, and of course I weed-eated right up to it. So if you put the, if you put the fence right on the line, on the, their own line, you know, the, on their side is what you have to weed eat, and then on your side, you have to weed eat yourself, but then the maintenance. I had, it was a wood fence, it was six feet tall, and, uh, it worked out really good, and when I was on the council, we had about four fences where it all went right up in the line. And, uh, um, Jason, that, that's another, Jason's another good one to address this one, because he's the one that straightened it out, the way the city interprets, I guess, is what I want to say. So I think there's another one Jason should talk to us about, um, because he, we, he was involved with the ones that I was calling, and he was over at my place looking at when I was ready to sell. And, uh, no, no, he was not, I just, I questioned it, but anyway, there's a lot of flexibility, I think, in our ordinance that people can get along, and if they don't get along, you know, you could be, you'll be able to six or eight inches off or whatever, so you can trim it, but...
And, and that's the intent, the way it's written here.
Right.
It, 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 it's still, I still would say, just in, in my opinion, um, even if the neighbors get along, it still should be six inches off on somebody's side, just because if the neighbor moves and the next neighbor you don't get along with.
And that's, that's where I was at, I, I was moving, and I had two neighbors that I had, actually three neighbors, that I had fences along their property, and, and it was, I just told them I was moving, and, and, uh, and so it seemed to work out pretty good, uh,
Yeah.
amongst that, but you're, it's...
Yep.
We got, we can't make it bulletproof, or I don't think the way it's gonna be, so...
And, and, and so that's why, you know, yes, if it, uh, putting a hard number like one or two feet off is gonna be, well, yeah, if you want, you know, you get along good, and you want to maintain it, and all that works great for twenty years, and then, then it doesn't, maybe, um, so...
The other thing is, putting that one or two foot off actually could create a side that has less maintenance or creates more problems. I mean, to me, if you're doing a no-maintenance fence and could put it right on the line like Scott referred to, that's the best of both worlds for both property owners.
It is. It's also more expensive in, uh,
Right.
in comparison to the wood, obviously. Um, but yes, that, you know, they said, that's why I said I don't want to require, you know, a, a two-foot setback, no matter what, because then you create these alleyways of nothing in between two neighboring properties, and, and that's not always the best case.
Well, you also, if two feet off can also be hard if you end up with, with a lot of people that have changes and slopes on their property,
Right.
where all of a sudden you're not on top of your retaining wall anymore and things like that, so we, we start causing problems with landscaping if we push people too far in because they didn't anticipate that either.
Yep. So that was the intent here, was to just, they said with this language, it just says, you know, must be able to maintain both sides, uh, if maintenance is required, to try to be as open, kind of like what Scott mentioned, and flexible to the situation as possible, instead of putting a hard number in there. Um, uh, it was the intent.
I, I think the wording is good, personally.
I, Darren, I just, I just, I would just like to see Jason, too, though, address that, just to talk just through it, so he, he can give us more scenarios than, uh, and, and talk more about it, too, so, just one more thing for him to, he's gonna hate me for this, but that's the way it is.
And if it's over seven feet tall...
Do we want to, we have the changes that we've kind of discussed and requested, we'll get wording back, wording changes back on these two, um, and then be able to talk to Jason at one of our next couple of meetings here, when, maybe when we have agenda time?
Sure.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Kelsey, second.
Uh, Jill, could you do roll call, please?
Laura?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, do we have any upcoming applications, Darren?
Not at this time.
Okay, any other old business, nothing I'm aware of?
No.
Um, city planner update?
I don't...
I guess you, you have news, we, I've talked to you, but others maybe haven't. We are sad to see things changing and you moving on, and, and we want to thank you for, on behalf of the Planning Commission and the City of Fergus, for all your hard work.
Yep, well, thank you. It'll be another month or two before this happens, so don't worry, we'll, uh, um, we'll get through all these little changes here. From the codes now.
Any other updates?
Uh, I don't have any, no.
Okay. Any city council update?
Not that I'm aware of, nope.
Okay. Jill, do you need a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, well then we are adjourned, and thank you everybody for your time tonight, and good discussion.